Questions, anyone? No. Thank you very much for your report. And that's generally overall good news that we have. And I'm looking forward to Deb's discussion of special ed. We can find a little bit more about that. So, thanks again.
we have, in response to SB 964, hired an independent consultant. Actually, WestEd is the contractor for that work. And also convened a 15-member panel regarding special ed and possible alternative routes and so forth. So, just wanted to update you on their work. WestEd is going to bring this group together five times. Their final report with options and recommendations is due May 1st. And, as I said, they will be meeting five times. The panel, by law, must be composed of individuals who represent specific areas of special ed community. So, we have teachers, we have administrators, we have parents, we have a good cross-section of folks. They met August 9th. That was their first meeting. Were given a conceptual framework for the study, reviewed high school exit exams, alternative graduation requirements, and alternative or diploma requirements across the nation. It's important that we have this context in order for the work of this group to go forward. They met October 12th. And during that meeting, they were provided a much more extensive background on Casey. We want the folks to be kind of on a level playing field in terms of the information that they have. They reviewed general issues about state and national trends relative to alternative assessments. And then they began work, a discussion about alternative assessments. And they're going to continue that discussion at their next meeting. And that next meeting is scheduled for January 7th. These are public meetings, and so we do get quite a number of folks to come and observe and comment, which is great. We want this to be an entirely open and visible process. So, their work will continue. Their next meeting after January is February, and then finally March. And so, in February, they'll be looking at draft recommendations brought forth by the contractor as a result of this work with the panel. And then, finally, in their March meeting, they'll review the draft report. So, you know, we don't know what those recommendations will be, but it's certainly possible that as a result of the committee, of the advisory panel's work, and the independent consultant, that we would bring forward to use some changes in terms of Casey. So, that will, may impact Dr. Wise's work in the future. Any questions?
Yes, thank you, Deb. What is, on average, the total number of special ed students with IEPs and 504s each year that take the high school exit exam?
It's about, it's about 41,000, is that? About 41,000. And about, anywhere from about 25 to 30 percent take that, take the Casey with accommodations.
Okay.
And I think last year it was 27 for ELA and 28 for math. And then about 7 percent modifications.
Right.
And about 7 percent ELA, about 15 percent math.
Okay. We did get that information memo on the modification part of that.
Okay.
So, that was good. Not on the accommodation, however, just in terms of the numbers. I was curious about that.
Okay, yeah, it's 27, 28.
Is there, when you break down, look at this data, is there...
29, sorry.
Do you also break it down by the different handicapping conditions, the categories that we have?
We do. We have that. I don't think Lori did. Did you, Lori?
There are a couple of tables and trends by just primary disability code that are in Chapter 2 of the report.
And we have it as well. Are you, are you referring to, in terms of who took it with accommodations and modifications?
Right, and what the specific disability was. I'm trying to get a sense more of the population we're dealing with and what...
Yes, we do. We can provide that to you.
That would be great. Thank you. And information to the field in terms of what we're doing with the high school exit exam and 964, they're aware of what we're doing in terms of all the school districts?
Well, we send out, we try to send out, if not monthly, probably every other month, we send out what we call our standards and assessment notes. And so, in that communication to the field, which is fairly widespread, goes to all testing directors and so forth, and curriculum folks, and county offices. And so, we try to, that's our, one of our means of communication. Also, on November 30th, we will be holding our annual fall information meeting. November 30th will be Sacramento, December 2nd will be in Burbank. That, we get about 600 people at each venue, which is our main, one of our main communication vehicles for getting all this information out. And this will absolutely inform the field about that. So, we try to keep them up to date.
Thank you very much, Deb.
You do have speakers?
Thank you, Deborah. Speakers, five.
Okay. I have Liz Guillermo, Sylvia Duruvo, Joe Beam.
Thank you. Good morning. Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. In July of 2003, we were joined by around 400 students and parent activists. And we said at that time that a two-year delay was not enough because we were concerned about the opportunities to learn. And we didn't think that two years would be enough time to improve those opportunities to learn. We think this report, once it's analyzed closely, will confirm that. For example, many students surveyed by HUMRO, three-fourths of those who did not pass the exam, reported that it will be harder to graduate because of it. Forty-four percent, 44 percent said a lot, 31 percent somewhat. Importantly, those students didn't know they had failed it when they were surveyed. Yet, we think that students are more likely to become discouraged and drop out when they know that they haven't passed. Many principals surveyed by HUMRO, 40 percent, reported that they believe the exam will strongly impact the dropout rate. We think that, for example, the HUMRO report points out that the percentage of high school principals reporting that they're offering appropriate preparatory courses has grown from 25 to 64 percent. Yet, that success story doesn't really acknowledge that more than a third of all principals continue to report that their schools are not offering a course of study that prepares students for the exam. We think that these problems, problems of opportunity to learn and preparation, are most acute in schools serving primarily low-income students of color. There were two reports during the Williams litigation, actually surveys by Lou Harris of over 1,000 teachers, that confirmed that there were startling opportunity-to-learn problems and gaps in many of our schools. Many students in the class of 2006 have attended inadequate schools for over 10 years. Those enrolled in overcrowded Concept 6 schools, year-round schools that have lost more than 170 days of instruction, a full year. Others have been taught by a series of underprepared teachers. The recent settlement in the Williams lawsuit promises to address some of these opportunity gaps, but not all of them, and only in deciles one to three schools.
A few minutes.
Until the state adequately funds schools and provides students with the equal opportunity to learn and prepare for a single test, we think it's unfair to deny them the diploma. While it's, it's been shown that the test has increased remedial courses, we think that's a good thing and a good result. And so, the use of the test for a diagnostic purpose to identify where needs are greatest, we agree with. But we do not believe it should be used for the denial of diplomas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more speakers, Deborah? Thank you.
Sylvia Duruvo, Cars Plus. I always enjoy Dr. Wise's presentations because he does talk about special education students and the concerns that we have about special ed. 81 percent not passing is not okay. First of all, I think, you know, when he says we need to continue to explore options, options is what our students need. We are glad that there's a 964 committee and that they are looking into those options. We hope that they will come out with some options that will allow our students to be successful. We need to look at what other states are doing. I'm glad that Mr. Gill brought up Massachusetts. 95 percent are passing their test. 88 percent of the special ed students are passing their tests. When WestEd looked at their accommodations and modifications, they do allow for modifications because they're saying the English Language Arts Test, the reading comprehension, is not a decoding test. It's a literary analysis test. And so, they do read the test to those students who have issues, visual processing disorders, because we want to know, can they analyze literature, not can they decode through their disability? So, we need to look at those options that other states offer that are providing success to students. Secondly, we do need to allow more time. Our issue is that many of our students have decided, I cannot pass that test, therefore I'll go to junior college, and I'll continue my life because life is the bigger picture. But, if they do not have a high school diploma, they can't get financial aid to go to junior college. So, there's a problem that they face, again. Thirdly, we do need to provide, look at curriculum, and our students need to be allowed alternative curriculum. If they could teach, the grade, if they could learn, the grade level materials with the grade level textbook, they'd be doing that in general ed and not be in special ed. It is very difficult for special education teachers to get their hands-on materials that would provide the instruction that our students could be successful with. I'm not here to say that our kids can't do this. They can. They need different instructional strategies, different instructional materials, and they need more time. And we need to look hard at, our kids, our special ed kids are the leftover kids, and they can't continue to be that because these are the kinds of results that we're going to continue to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
I'm Joe Beam, past state president of Learning Disability Association, parent of a child with dyslexia who fortunately graduated in 2003, so he's off to college without the high school exit exam. I'm also on the parent of attorneys and advocates, National Public Policy Committee, and the new government affairs chair of the California Community Advisory Commission Coalition, which has 50 CACs throughout California as members. I'm concerned about one thing, got a whole list here, SB 964, the new panel it's convened. I think they've got a big job to do with 30,000 to 40,000 kids taking the high school exit exam every year with the possibility of 20 to 30, only 20 to 30 percent passage rate, especially five one-day meetings. I just got an email last week from the governor of Maryland, for example. They're just convening a very similar panel with almost identical responsibilities. And their panel, for this purpose, will take three years for their report. And our, our report for the same task is due May 1st with five one-day meetings. So, I'm concerned about the ability of the panel to really be able to do the job they need to do. I would like to ask that the HUMRO report hopefully be put up on the website as public information so we can all share that with our parent groups. I'd like to caution everyone involved with this high school exit exam not to compare apples to avocados that we have in California. For example, Massachusetts, they've been slammed all over the media for their data. Their data only calculated their success rate based upon the number of seniors, seniors who were still left in December of their 12th grade year. And also, even Virginia with their SOLs. Virginia students are allowed a wide breadth of accommodations and modifications if they're special education students, including being able to take their exams on the computer. So, please, and also Florida has an emergency bill that was passed unbelievably by their Republican governor to take care of kids with learning disabilities who had failed the test after the second time. So, really, I think we're doing a mistake here to look at other states without carefully dissecting their data because it's, can paint very unrealistic picture.
Oh, that's your time?
Oh, please, I've got to say one more thing. Also, all these reports that come up, like the HUMRO report and the data that's on the website, I would like to make sure that when a person looks up the Casey results, that we're given real, honest-to-goodness numbers. For example, you know, 39 percent of socioeconomic kids, that's really 70,000 kids that have not passed this yet. 17 percent of English proficient is 8,000. 51 percent of English language learners is 41,000 kids.
Could you wrap this up, please?
Okay, I'll wrap up just by saying that one of the other things that we need to see when we look up this data, because we're only one of six states in the U.S. that uses a high-stakes exit exam as a criteria for graduation superseding all other 13 years of accomplishment. So, it's really important that we see what we're talking about here in terms of real numbers, in terms of the cohort of dropouts, beginning with the number of kids in the ninth grade compared to the number of kids that graduate with a standard diploma. I think we also need to see how the exit exam results are broken down by minorities and how they're broken down by the number of credentialed math teachers and English teachers and English language specialists that have taught these kids. Because I'm sure in the schools that have 30, 40, 50 percent of non-qualified instructors, that we're going to see a decrease in rate. So, I'd like to see more depth and more breadth to what we can find on the website as far as the passage and failure rates.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I agree with you on the, putting the HUMRO report on the web, and I understand that that is a possibility.
It's already on there.
Oh, well, thank you very much. Okay.
And also, I would like to ask that what Deb mentioned, as far as all the breakdowns in the use of modifications and accommodations, 504s versus IEPs that through maybe Barbara McDonald, that the rest of the citizens in California have access to that similar kind of data.
Thank you.
Possibly foster care and juvenile justice could go back up on the website as far as their pass rates as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I was, we discussed how our goal is 100 percent of all of our students passing this exam. And the other thing to remember is the reason that we do reports like HUMRO is because we want to know where the system needs to be improved, how we're doing, what students we need to focus on, inform the instruction. And so, we've asked Sue to give us a little bit of an update about sort of the department's response to the recommendations. Obviously, there will be a continued response, but if she could just give us an update on it.
Good af, almost good afternoon. Close. Anyway, you did, in fact, ask me to come forward and talk about this issue today. A number of things are going on. One of the things is that you, people have talked about school districts actually using this initial screen of the Casey test and then using further assessment information to pinpoint what it is that students are weak in. And then, we in turn, at the department, are helping school districts and schools work with those weaknesses to create intervention programs so that students can access the curriculum and access the standards at the level they need to. Most districts are looking and realizing that their students are, that are failing are either very close and just perhaps need what I would call some prompt review. And then, there's some students that are very far away. And those are the students that we are making sure have anywhere from two to three hours of intervention in high school. If they're struggling to decode and struggling with their fluency and comprehension, we want to make sure that they have all of the things that they need to be successful on the high school exit exam. So, it's occurring in a number of places, and we know that. One of the places is we know through our state reviews. When we go out and do our state reviews, we're having conversations because we key on 9th and 10th grade and actually the standards that are assessed in the high school exit exam. We're making sure that those intervention courses are in fact offered at the schools. And so, we, when we, when you look at the academic program survey, it asks a very pointed question about those interventions. And so, for the students that are far away from passing, the interventions are being put in place. In term, you have adopted intervention programs that are used in high school in the area of language arts. And with the next math adoption, the draft framework that's out there right now has criteria for intervention programs in mathematics so that students and teachers will be able to access materials to help them with that.
Thank you very much, Sue. At this point, we have to break for lunch and reconvene at 1 o'clock. Thank you.
Are we going to continue to talk about this subject?
Ruth?
Is that today?
Ruth?
Oh, wait, hold on just...
An hour and a half.
One moment, everyone. Excuse me.
Are we going to continue?
I take it back. I'm so sorry. We actually have a 90-minute lunch today due to the student committee.
Are we going to continue to talk about this after lunch or not?
We can if you'd like to.
Because I have a problem in that we're, we're putting some really big initiatives into the school system without adequate data as to what the results are going to be. And I think we have a big chance to be embarrassed by the whole thing. And I, we're, we're just not testing. A business would test this kind of thing before they ever got it installed. And I realize what Reed says, that the kids don't want to take the test because it doesn't mean anything. But there's some way that we could get a significant sampling of the kids going through, all the way through to the 12th grade to get some data that we can look at. Because this is going to come up, all of a sudden, we're not going to know anything about it, and then what are we going to do? Some groups are going to pass, some of the schools are going to pass 80 percent, some will pass 90, 95 percent. But, it's going to be highly embarrassing, I believe. And I think that we just don't have the data available to us to, to make the decisions that we're doing the right thing. And, you know, I hear some of the testimony here right now, and there's a lot of questions out there. I would strongly recommend maybe that we pay those schools $50,000 or something extra if they can insist on getting 100 percent of their kids or 80, 90 percent of their kids to take these exams until they graduate in the 12th grade. And it has no impact on whether they graduate or not, but at least we'd have it before the whole test goes into effect with all the schools in the state. I just think that it's a big mistake.
I did want to just make a clarification. The class of 2006, the students that did not pass either math or English Language Arts last year are currently in the round of retesting right now. And in fact, some 11th graders took the test in September. We have another testing administration in November, and then February, March, and May. And so, I just wanted to be clear, we will have additional data at the end of this round. Well, through the 12th grade is just for the class of 2006, so your concern is still warranted there. But I wanted to be clear that we'll have this midpoint kind of cumulative effect. So, we know we're at about 75 percent right now, we're at about three-quarters of our 10th graders who have passed, and, which is very, very, very consistent with other state initial passing rates. But then, at the end of this testing round, we'll have our first look at cumulative rates. And so, I think we'll be in a better position to kind of look at, doing some predicting about where we think we'll be at 12th grade.
Will they take the test all the way through? I mean, you know, you're going, you're just trying to interpolate what's going to happen. And it isn't 75 percent of both math and language arts. It's a difference in both of those.
It's 74 math and 75 language arts, right.
There was a bigger difference than that. But, I do believe that we should have a much better idea of what we're going to get when we get through because this is all going to be published, and there's going to be a lot of embarrassment out there if we're not, not correct.
Well, I think we've got, you know, I, I agree. I mean, I, none of us want to be embarrassed, and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And the board set this policy to make some changes to the exam, which I think, given this new round of results, I think have been a move in the right direction. I just want to be sure that you know you'll be getting data to, that I think will improve the comfort level in the policy direction that you've set forth. And we'll come back to you in August. That's when we'll bring forth the cumulative results.
And Don, I understand, I think also it would be important for us to continue to investigate what Massachusetts has done, and apparently Florida, and understand all the pitfalls because ultimately, they have been very successful. And so, we can learn from what they've done and then incorporate that into what we're doing here. But, thank you. I appreciate those comments. We will take a 90-minute lunch break at this point in time. Thank you all. Now, to be followed immediately after by item 32, the health adoption item. So, item 18 with, is the 0506 State Board of Education member, and we're going to have a report from Rebecca Parker, and I think Ricky will probably help on this. So...
Thank you, Madam President. The screening committee just met over the lunch recess and interviewed six of the finalists that had been screened out from 12 semifinalists of students who were interested in being an applicant, a member, a student member in the State Board of Education, sorry. At the, after asking a series of questions, the board deliberated it was a hard decision. But we have a list of finalists that we are asking that you recommend to be sent to the governor for his final decision. Those three finalists, as you can tell, are Paul Gardner III, Anna Coutier, and Daniel Schultz. Now, if you look on the reverse side of the page, you'll see the names and the high schools of those other students who were semifinalists. It was a tough decision at every single point. They were all very, very qualified.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, we do.
Ruth, could I just add something?
Please.
I just want to commend the efforts of all these candidates. I think they're very interested in public service. It's a noble cause, and they're very impressive, every single one of them. So, I appreciate their willingness to serve. And would you like to make a motion? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve these three candidates to be forwarded onto the governor's office.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the motion would be that Paul Gardner III, Anna Coutier, Daniel Schultz, as the three finalists in preference order for the position of 0506 student member, to be presented to the governor for appointment consideration, to have a motion. Ricky? And a second from Janine. All those in favor? All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to our three finalists. And Ricky, thank you for all your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now go to item 32. And Tom Adams. And we are taking this out of order because of scheduling problems for the folks that have been waiting quite a while. So, we'll go back to our assessment items after this. Hello there.
President Green, members of the board, Superintendent O'Connell. I am Edith Crawford, Chair of the Curriculum Commission and Vice Principal at Merrill Loma High School in the San Juan Unified School District. Last year, I stood before you as Chair of the Foreign Language Subject Matter Committee and presented the recommendations for that adoption. I have been honored to participate in three adoptions. In 2002, in the Reading Language Arts, English Language Development Primary Adoption. Last year, the Foreign Language Primary Language Adoption. And this year, the Health Primary Language Adoption. This will be my last presentation to the board. I've been on the board for four years. I would like to thank you so much for the privilege of having to serve on the commission. It has been one of the highlights of my educational career. I also want to thank you as educator in California since 1987 for your continued support of the standards, for quality materials, and an accountability system that has given us the authority and the moral obligation to teach all our students in our California schools. I'd like to now talk about the health adoption. In October, the Curriculum Commission presented an information item on the status of the 2004 Health Primary Language Adoption and the recommendations on the eight programs submitted for this adoption. The Curriculum Commission is presenting our recommendations on the 2004 Health Primary Language Adoption for your action at this November meeting. Sandra Mann, Chair of the Health Subject Matter Committee, will be co-presenting with me today. I will provide a historical background of the adoption, and Sandra will provide a brief overview of the evaluation criteria, the evaluation process, the edits and corrections. And I will be presenting the commission's recommendations on the programs we would like to have put forward for adoption. Sandra will then talk about the commission's recommendations on two publishers not recommended for the adoption in a closing statement. The health adoption was conducted under the legal authority of ED Code 60200. The Health Adoption was conducted under the legal authority of ED Code 60200, which set forth legal requirements for the adoption of curriculum frameworks, adoptions of basic instructional materials, submission processes, and evaluation criteria. In March 2002, the State Board adopted the Health Framework for California Public Schools' Kindergartens Grade K-12 2003 Edition and Evaluation Criteria. The Health Framework 2003 Edition includes a unique feature, the Grade Level Emphasis Charts. These charts identify skills and behaviors students should learn at each grade level and guides teachers and publishers on where to place instructional emphasis to improve continuity as students progress from one grade level to the next. The Health Framework also includes current health issues affecting students, such as school safety, mental health, violence prevention, updates on state and federal laws, teacher training, and technology guidelines for evaluating web-based websites relating to health. It is indeed a unique document. To assist reviewers in determining how the submitted programs aligned with health expectations in the Grade Level Emphasis Charts, the commission developed grade-level emphasis map forms for publishers to complete. Now I'd like to review some of the highlights, Health Adoption timelines and highlights. On December 11, 2002, the State Board adopted the 2004 Health Primary Adoption Timeline, identifying significant events. On April 9, 2003, the State Board authorized the Curriculum Commission to proceed with the adoption and recruit Instructional Material Advisory Panel members, IMAPs, and Content Review Panelists, CRPs. On December 12, 2003, the Invitation to Submit Meeting was held, inviting publishers to submit full basic programs for the 2004 Health Primary Adoption. On January 6, 2004, the State Board approved the first cohort of IMAP members and CRP experts. And on March 10, 2004, the State Board approved the second cohort of IMAPs and CRPs. On April 6 to 8, 2004, in Sacramento, 23 IMAP members and six CRP member experts and new and participating commissioners trained in the Health Framework, Evaluation Criteria, and Legal and Social Compliance Reviews for the Health Framework. Publishers were also invited and present during the duration of the training. On July 19 to 22, again in Sacramento, the 23 IMAPs, six CRPs, commissioners, publishers, convened in Sacramento for deliberations on submitted programs for the 2004 Health Adoption. Finally, an edits and corrections meeting was held on October 21 for publishers to present corrections identified by IMAPs, CRPs, and commissioners. With a change in the State Board meeting schedule, we have asked that both the public hearing and State Board action on the 2004 Health Primary Adoption takes place at your November 2004 meeting. As you can see, the commission has worked hard to follow up on processes and meet all the deadlines. Now I'd like to invite the Chair of the Health Subject Matter Committee, Dr. Sandra Mann.
Thank you, Edith. Good afternoon, President Green, members of the board. I'm Dr. Sandra Mann. I chair the Health Subject Matter Committee for the Curriculum Commission. I also chair the Science Subject Matter for the Curriculum Commission. I'm a member of the Science Content Review Panel for the STAR Testing Program, so I review test questions that go on the California Standards Tests. But the position of which I am most proud is that I teach high school biology in San Diego Unified School District. I led the training and deliberation for the IMAPs and the CRP experts that evaluated the materials submitted for the 2004 Health Primary Adoption. I'm going to go through with you what the process has been. The evaluation criteria that are used for this adoption are found in the State Board adopted Health Framework in Chapter 6, which is appropriately titled, "The Criteria for Evaluating Instructional Materials for Kindergarten Through Grade 8." Chapter 6 focuses on the development and evaluation of instructional materials. The chapter emphasizes that materials must be scientifically and medically accurate, must be based on current and confirmed research, and must enable students to develop goals of lifelong positive health behaviors and attitudes. The criteria are organized into five categories, and you'll find these in the criteria in Appendix A of your agenda item. The first category is Health Content Alignment with Curriculum. This is the content that's specified in the Health Framework, and you can see that in the Grade Level Emphasis Charts. This is the Gatekeeper Criterion Category. Programs that do not meet these criteria cannot go on to be adopted. The second criteria category is Program Organization, or the sequence and organization of the health instructional materials. The third category is Assessment, the strategies and assessment tools in the instructional materials for measuring what students know and are able to do. The fourth category is Universal Access, the information and ideas that address the needs of special student populations, including students identified for special education, English learners, and advanced students. The fifth category is Instructional Planning and Support. The Instructional Planning and Support information and materials typically including a teacher's edition that assists teachers in the implementation of the health education program. Health materials must support teaching aligned with the Health Framework. Materials that fail to meet the health content criteria will not be considered satisfactory for adoption. Only programs that are determined to have met all the five criteria categories are being recommended for adoption. Okay, let me go over with you the review process. The adoption process involves four reviews. Each of these is important, each of these is required. There is a review by the IMAP members and CRP experts, and they again go over all five categories of the evaluation criteria. There's a Legal and Social Compliance Review that's conducted both by the IMAP CRPs and by members of the public. There is a public review, and we'll discuss that more later. The Curriculum Commission also does a review, and they make then recommendations to the State Board. So let me go over each of these reviews in a bit more detail. As mentioned, there were 23 IMAP members and six CRP experts, for a total of 29. They formed four panels and evaluated eight programs. The CRPs are experts who were either physicians specializing in pediatrics or internal medicine, or they held doctorate degrees in a health-related field. IMAP members were either K through 12 classroom teachers, dieticians, nurses, health curriculum coordinators, and parents from all over the state. On April 6 through 8, the IMAP CRPs were trained to, trained on how to evaluate the instructional materials. They were, became very familiar with the framework, with the Grade Level Emphasis Charts, and with the criteria. Each IMAP member, each CRP expert, conducted their own independent review over the course of the next several weeks. On July 19 through 22, the IMAPs and CRPs convened in Sacramento for deliberations, and they worked collaboratively with the commissioner facilitator. This collaboration produced a report of findings for each of the eight programs that had been submitted for review. These reports were forwarded to the Curriculum Commission for our meeting that occurred last month. So that was the first review. The second review is the Legal and Social Compliance Review. IMAP members and CRP experts were asked to conduct a concurrent Legal and Social Compliance Review. This is a review to make sure that there is an accurate and respectful representation of genders, ethnicities, individuals with disabilities, the elderly, et cetera, and that there's no appropriate, inappropriate use of logos or brand names. In addition, the materials were reviewed by a group of 22 public volunteers. All of the Legal and Social Compliance citations have been resolved. And a report on that review can be found in Appendix C of your agenda item. The Curriculum Commission Review. The Curriculum Commission had the opportunity to review the IMAP CRP reports of findings following their deliberations in July. Also, beginning in April, commissioners had the opportunity and the obligation to carry out their own independent review of each program prior to the commission meeting at the end of September. This independent review is necessary and important. Prior to the commission meeting, one of the commissioners, Dr. Stan Metzenberg, raised concerns about the three programs submitted by Health Wave Incorporated. Dr. Metzenberg is a PhD biologist. He's a professor of biology at Cal State University Northridge. His concerns regarded how well the programs addressed the Grade Level Emphasis Maps, about the scientific and medical accuracy of the material. Some of his concerns regarded privacy issues, and in particular, they regarded how well the programs addressed Criterion Category Number Four about universal access. During the Curriculum Commission meeting, there were two public comment sessions held. One was during the meeting of the Health Subject Matter Committee, the other was during the full commission meeting the following day. Two members of the public spoke at both of these hearings. During the Health Subject Matter Committee meeting on September 30, commissioners reported on the programs reviewed by their panels, and a discussion of each program took place. When the Health Wave program was discussed, Commissioner Metzenberg's concerns were addressed, as well as the concerns of several other commissioners, including myself. Following this discussion and the public hearing, for each program, a roll call vote was conducted of the Health Committee members. The next day, October 1, following a second public hearing, the full commission discussed all of the submitted programs. The commission chair, in each case, asked for a motion and a second on each of the programs submitted. The motions were always stated in the affirmative. That was followed by a final roll call vote for each program. The recommendations were, one, to recommend for specific grades, or, two, to recommend for specific grades with minor edits and corrections. And this had occurred at both the Subject Matter Committee and the full commission level, that the motion was always stated in the affirmative. A total of nine votes, or a majority of those present, at the full commission meeting were required to recommend any program to the State Board. Okay, that was the Curriculum Commission review. There was also one final review, which is the opportunity for public comment. In accordance with Education Code Section 60202 and 5CCR Section 9519, the public has an opportunity to review instructional materials displayed at the 24 Learning Resources, Learning Resource Display Centers, or LRDCs. And you have a list of those in your Appendix B. They're located throughout the state. At the LRDCs, the public may review the programs that have been submitted for adoption and make comments. Comments are forwarded to the Curriculum Commission and to the State Board. All materials for this adoption were on display beginning April 13. The general public was given an opportunity to provide written comments through October 31. State Superintendent O'Connell issued in a news release right after the Curriculum Commission meeting on October 4, the list of materials that the commission was recommending for adoption to the State Board. Individual LRDCs also released information about the recommendations and the availability of materials for public review. A total of 53 comments have been received. 52 comments were from the LRDC at San Francisco State University. One comment came from the LRDC at UC Santa Barbara. The public comments are presented to you in a last-minute memorandum to the State Board. These comments do not alter the commission's recommendations to the State Board. Separate from these reviews, and following the Curriculum Commission meeting, an edits and correction meeting took place. It is normal for even a very good program to require some minor edits and corrections to ensure that the information presented is scientifically and medically accurate, and that there are no problems with formatting, spelling, typos, et cetera. All publishers participate, or at least are invited to participate in this process, regardless of whether their program is recommended for adoption by the commission. The edits and corrections meeting took place October 21, was chaired by Commission Chair Crawford and myself. One CRP expert and three IMAP members also participated in the meeting, and the C4 Division staff provided support. Five publishers participated in the meeting, and each had a prearranged meeting time to discuss the edits and corrections for their submitted programs. At the meeting, publishers agreed to make edits or corrections to their programs. However, Health Wave Incorporated still has some outstanding edits that have not been addressed. They need to be reviewed and approved by a commission panel. As part of your action at this meeting, we would like approval on programs recommended by the commission for specific grades with the minor edits and corrections. Furthermore, although not recommended for adoption, we would like approval of the edits and corrections on the three programs submitted by Health Wave Incorporated. We are assisting this publisher to at least be able to have their materials approved for the Legal and Social Compliance List. However, they would need to make the edits and corrections recommended by the commission. It is our goal to encourage publishers to provide high-quality instructional materials and to recommend as many of these programs as meet our criteria as possible. There are directions in the ED Code to the effect that at least five programs in each content area should be adopted when possible. That's not possible in this case, because fewer than five basic instructional materials programs in health were even submitted for those, for, excuse me, for grade levels K through 8, except grade 6. In this case, ED Code Section 60200E provides that the State Board, quote, "conduct a review of the degree to which the criteria and procedures used to evaluate the submitted materials for the adoption were consistent with the State Board's adopted curriculum framework," unquote. In other words, they want us to make sure we haven't dropped the ball, and to assure you of that. To that end, and on the State Board's behalf, the Curriculum Commission and the Department of Education staff conducted this review. The review concluded, one, the evaluation criteria were in fact based on the grade level expectations as presented in the Grade Level Emphasis Chart and the Health Framework that has been adopted by the State Board of Education. The criteria and, second, sorry, the criteria and procedures used to evaluate the submitted materials for adoption were entirely consistent with the grade level expectations and the Health Framework. Three, it was the very consistency of the evaluation criteria with the grade level expectations and the Health Framework that resulted in fewer than five basic instructional programs in health being recommended for adoption for grades K through 8. Fourth, overall, the rejected programs failed to meet the evaluation criteria. Fifth, in the review process, the evaluation criteria were applied fairly and consistently. It will be necessary upon conclusion of the State Board's vote on the programs that the board also vote to waive the requirement for at least five basic programs at each grade level. Okay, I'm going to turn it back over to Edith Crawford.
I'd like to thank all those involved in the 2004 Health Primary Adoption, and I'm very proud that the commission has conducted an in-depth process that has led to recommending the very best available instructional materials in health to meet the State Board's Health Framework and Evaluation Criteria. This vigorous review by the commission members has allowed them to make the recommendations of the program that they felt were aligned to the content, evaluation criteria, grade level emphasis charts, and the Health Framework. We have reviewed the materials and examined all the proposed edits and corrections. We truly appreciate the partnership with the publishers in developing these materials and appreciate their willingness to address the concerns of the Curriculum Commission, the IMAP members, and CRP experts. All the programs went through the same vigorous review process. The commission recommendation report provides a chart that recommends four programs to be adopted, one K-8 program, one K-6 program, and two 6-8 programs. The charts also identify the four programs not recommended. The recommendations are as follows. Number one, publisher McMillan-McGraw-Hill program, McMillan-McGraw-Hill Health and Wellness for grades K-8. Publisher two, Harcourt School Publishers program, Harcourt Health and Fitness for grades K-6. Number three, publishers Glencoe-McGraw-Hill program, Glencoe Teen Health for grades 6-8. And number four, publisher Holt-Reinhardt &amp; Winston, program Holt Decisions for Health grades 6-8. And now Commissioner Mann will continue with presenting the other recommendations.
Thank you, Edith. Okay, the commission does not recommend programs from the following publishers, Health Wave Incorporated and Myrtle Learns. Health Wave Incorporated submitted three programs. Health Promotion Wave for the primary level, grades K through 3. Health Promotion Wave for upper elementary levels, grades 4 and 5. Health Promotion Wave for middle school, grades 7 and 8. 5; Health Promotion Wave for middle school, grades 7 and 8, sorry, 6 through 8. The commission recommended against all three programs submitted by Healthwave Incorporated because all three programs were not fully aligned with all of the five criteria. Deficiencies included content called for by the grade level emphases chart and strategies or suggestions for universal access. All three programs have insufficient content coverage. All three programs inaccurately use medical and health vocabulary. The commission had concerns about the medical and scientific accuracy of the content. All three programs do not contain suggestions based on current and confirmed research to adapt curriculum and instruction to meet students' assessed special needs. All three programs do not provide strategies to help students who are below grade level in reading, writing, speaking, and listening in English to understand the health content or suggestions for advanced learners. I know that you as members of the board are being lobbied to override the commissioner's recommendations and to adopt at least two of the Healthwave programs. Following our report, I would be more than happy to give you more information on the deliberations for these programs, my own concerns about these programs, to elaborate on the concerns that the commission has identified, and to rebut charges being made by the publisher. As a matter of fact, I would welcome that opportunity. Second publisher, Myrtle Learns, submitted a K3 program called Myrtle Teachable Moments: Health Literacy and Character Education. This program, though delightful, was not aligned with the evaluation criteria for the health framework as described in Chapter 6 of the Health Framework 2003 Edition. The program does not align with the evaluation criteria and the content in the grade level emphases maps. The program lacks consistent alignment with the evaluation criteria. The program materials failed to provide instruction in several areas outlined in the grade level emphases maps. The program is not organized and presented in a manner consistent with achieving the goals of providing all students with essential knowledge and skills. The program does not provide reasonable pace and depth of coverage to prepare students for learning the content. The program does not provide a well-organized structure that allows the opportunity to learn the grade level topics and to build on knowledge and skills acquired at earlier grade levels. Assessment strategies to determine students' prior knowledge were not consistently provided for each subject area. The program provides few assessment instruments or suggestions. The program does not offer suggestions for special needs students or English learners. The program does not offer strategies for advanced students. The program does not provide a clear roadmap for teachers to follow when planning instruction based on the content in the grade level emphases maps. The health content is not accurately explained for the teacher. There are no suggestions on locating medically and scientifically accurate information. The program does not provide support for research-based programs. Suggestions on pacing are not provided. This concludes the commission's recommendations on submitted programs for the 2004 health primary adoption. We thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation and for entrusting us with this important task. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Ruth, thank you. Are you ready for discussion, or do you want to?
No, this is a, yes, this is a public, am I on okay? Can you hear? Yeah, okay. No, this is a public hearing, and so what we'll do now is open and call for public comment. So, and this is two minutes we're doing.
I have a number of people signed up, but if you're not signed up, you're more than welcome to come up. Barbara Mogio, or Mogio, Merle Cohen, Rob Whittick, Frank, whose last name I will not torture, Jonathan Mogio, and Dee Brennack. And anyone else is welcome to come.
If it's all right, I would like to use some of my colleagues' time. I think it will go faster and it will be a smoother presentation, if that's all right, eight to 10 minutes.
That is not a custom that we normally follow. We normally have each person do their two minutes, so it would be up to you.
Is this all on the Healthwave discussion?
Yes, it's a review of our process. It sort of flows, but if we need...
And there are a number of you, how many public speakers do you have?
There are four of us.
Okay, so eight to 10 minutes is fine. Let's do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Green and other board members. I am the president of Health Promotion Wave, a health education publishing company based in Stanford, Connecticut. Our program is widely used throughout the entire country; we're in thousands of school districts, including several hundred schools in California. Our program is research-based and has been proven effective by an independent research organization. You should have received a letter from us urging you to set aside the recommendation of the curriculum commission not to recommend our program, Health Promotion Wave, in grades K through 5. We believe you are being asked to make a decision without being fully informed. What you have in front of you is the curriculum commission report. What has not been provided to you is the IMAP CRP report, which we are now distributing. These starkly different reports reflect one recommendation that is based on a thorough, in-depth review of our materials, and a second report based largely on the ad hoc observations of a single commissioner. The IMAP CRP panel, a very knowledgeable and experienced group of professionals, included a pediatrician, a school nurse, a health teacher, and a health education consultant, to name a few. This panel was trained for three days in April. The panel members had approximately three months to review the materials in depth before reconvening in July to review their findings, at which time they recommended adoption of Health Promotion Wave grades K through 5. One week prior to the curriculum commission on September 30th and October 1st, and seven weeks after the recommendation to adopt K through 5, one commissioner submitted a memo of concerns about our program. We provided this memo, we were provided this memo just two days before the curriculum commission convened on September 30th to consider its recommendations to you, the state board. We respect Commissioner Metzenberg's right to review and like or dislike any program. However, his review was conducted without the benefit of training on the evaluation criteria, without the benefit of training on social and legal compliance issues, and without the training of the grade level emphases maps. As a publisher trying to play by the rules established by this board, it raises grave concerns to me when doing, when reviews are conducted, excuse me, outside the bounds of the training approved by the state board. By doing this on his own, any commissioner, and in this case Commissioner Metzenberg, judged educational programs based on his own criteria and conjecture. This practice not only ignores the adoption process, but also undermines the power of the state board to implement predetermined requirements to which all participants of an adoption swore to abide. We believe that any changes to the thorough evaluation of a program should be dealt with seriously and should be based on intimate knowledge of the program. In contrast to this, this stunningly biased and negative concerns expressed by Commissioner Metzenberg influenced the curriculum commission to ignore the IMAP CRP's recommendations to adopt and to issue a second, shallow, and unsubstantiated report not to adopt our program. Please note the vagueness of these references. No citations are provided. Where is the evidence demonstrating insufficient content coverage? Where is the evidence demonstrating the concerns about medically and scientifically accurate account? It is clear that Commissioner Metzenberg's report was highly influential in the commission's decision to overturn. However, the same report deemed so crucial by the commission on October 1st was reduced to minor edits and corrections at the October 21st meeting. I would also like to distribute at this time the original memo distributed by Commissioner Metzenberg on September 27th. I would also like to distribute the edits and corrections that were handed to me the day of the edits and correction meeting when I walked into that room. And this is why we have outstanding edits and corrections, because we were never even given the opportunity to address the additional edits and concerns that Commissioner Metzenberg handed to the commissioners the day before the edits and corrections committing. The other information that you don't have in front of you is the results of the edits and corrections committee meeting. By strict adherence to the guidelines established for all adoptions, edits and corrections meetings can only address minor editing. Changing the content of any program is prohibited. Every content and every privacy concern raised by the commissioner was either dismissed or deemed to be an edit and correction. As far as universal access, excuse me, the commissioner states that he does not agree with the review panel findings. He claims he cannot find a single citation to support universal access. I believe clearly that he does not have a thorough understanding of what universal access materials are. The idea of making curriculum materials universally accessible, particularly in response to the 1997 IDEA legislation, led to something far greater than simply making suggestions to teachers on how they might adapt the materials to make them inclusive. It led to the development of universal design for living, referred to as, for learning, excuse me, referred to as UDL, wherein by design and by the very nature of the design of the curriculum materials, they are accessible to all, students of all levels. Universal design is achieved by flexibility. A universally designed curriculum overcomes limitations by incorporating three principles of flexibility into the design: multiple methods of presentation, multiple options for participation, and multiple means of expression. Universally designed instruction provides alternatives in order to be accessible and appropriate for students with diverse backgrounds, learning styles, and disabilities. In the handouts that you just received, or you're about to receive, we point out the methods and teaching strategies embedded within the HPW curriculum that are research-based and supported by the research. The use of these methods and strategies, the use of multiple methods of presentation, and the use of multiple options for participation, and the multiple means of expression and assessment provide multiple points of entry for all students of all abilities. I also want to point out that throughout the curriculum commission meeting, several times commissioners asked the two commissioners who chaired our panel about their feelings of the program and how, whether or not the program passed muster. Time and time again, and we have minutes from those meetings, both of our commissioners continued to support how Health Promotion Wave met all of the criteria required for passing evaluation. In fact, they continued to vote for our program throughout the entire two days of the meeting. In summary, I would like to be very clear: we are not challenging the process, but rather the integrity of the process. This is our second California adoption. As a health education specialist with a master's degree in public health from Yale University, I have tremendous respect for this California health framework. We were well aware of the long, demanding, and regulatory process required. We developed a special California addition. It's what the health frame demanded, it's what the state board demanded, and it is what we delivered. Many of you on this board are ideal examples of what can be accomplished when you set high goals and when you combine great ideas with hard work, quality individuals, and integrity. We are extremely proud of our program. We welcome the opportunity to discuss at any time our program in detail with whomever necessary. Please consider our request to set aside the curriculum commission's decision and adopt Health Promotion Wave in grades K through 5. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I didn't know if you wanted to stay for questions.
I'll take public comment, thank you.
Is Dee Brennack here?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are. Thanks.
Good afternoon. I was on the phone most of the morning with Jackie Goldberg, who was one of the commissioners on this health adoption, and also Commissioner Michael Matsuda, who was also on this, was in charge of some of the health adoptions. And they asked me to convey to you their disgust at what happened with the Health Promotion Wave series. Both of them were very much in favor of it. They feel that the real reason that they want to reject it is because it's student-centered and not direct instruction. I've seen the curriculum commission in action now for almost two years, and one of the things that I've noticed is that they push this direct instructional idea, and we all know what that is. It was what we loved about school when we were in it, where you sat and listened to somebody talk for six hours. Health Promotion Wave is a batch of materials that are all student-centered, and any kind, you can adapt it for any student that sees it. And it looks to me like if I were teaching health, and I taught for 35 years in an inner-city classroom, that this would be the program that I wanted. Jackie said to tell you that all of the teachers on her panel gave her their cards and asked for copies...